Conditional requirements, we'll say, in these par- in these sentences.
So, can any department request for waiver be granted by the first selectman and finance director without the board of selectmen approval?
Yes.
Because it says further, it doesn't say...
Further means also, I mean, you know, it's also, further additionally.
To me, the way I read that, I have lawyers here, is waivers have to be approved by the board of selectmen and the department.
These aren't, uh, these are not, um, these are separate circumstance, separate scenarios, if you will.
Okay, I understand the scenario for the, for the second one, if a department head needs something.
Mm-hmm.
What's the scenario for the first one?
It could be almost an emergency, it could be, you know...
It could be a department head, it could be whatever.
It could, well, it could be the holes in the roof of the police department building have become so large that we're not going to make it through the month of October.
So, in that case, the decision to bring it to the board of selectmen would be made by the first selectman?
Or made on my own.
Yes.
His or her own?
Yeah.
Alternatively, if the first selectman won't waive it, the board of selectmen can override him.
Well, one, one deals with the...
Is that how you, is that, that's how I read it?
Except the sp- the first selectman makes the agenda. I'm just saying.
Or the finance director says, "I'm not comfortable with this."
Yeah.
Right? She could say, "I'm not comfortable with this."
Yeah.
And then she'll, "I'll bring it to the board of selectmen."
How about if we disagree? Is that in there? Do we both have to say yes?
You both have to say yes. The way I read it, you both have to say it unless the board of selectmen over...
Oh, boy.
You're looking at two different approaches to solv- the, the, the problem needs to be solved, is that you can't avoid the wa- you need, you need to get a waiver, make it simple, right? And there's two ways of doing it. One is to alter the quote or bid requirements, and that would be done through the board of selectmen. The other way is directly to the first selectman, where you alter the, the dollar threshold.
Yes.
So, it's another way to get around, so you have two alternative ways
Yes.
of circumventing the waiver requirement.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Thanks, yeah, that's, that's very much on point, that's, we're dealing with the...
One is altering the dollar amounts, the other is
Could be just...
Just getting rid of the bid requirement altogether.
Yes.
And that would be the, the board of selectmen.
Paul, would the better word for...
For example, using a short form bid package in lieu of...
Would alternatively be better than further?
Right.
Alternatively, instead of further, would that...
The lawyers have looked at this, I am not a lawyer, so, please.
No, lawyers haven't, well, these lawyers.
Well, I think the word further gives you another option, it's not necessarily alternative, it's just out there, so...
Okay.
Further is much more neutral word, we'll say, if you have to be...
I trust it.
I, I mean, just generally in this, I have to say, I think it's, it's not written in legalese, I mean, I think it's pretty well standard English, um, there's no heretofores, no thereafters and so forth.
I wanted to throw a couple of those in there, I don't know why.
I, I, I made a, very much a concerted effort not to do that, so, um, but I did, well, I'm up here, if I could just make some comment about that second paragraph of section one about the Board of Ed. So, when I first came on to this project, I thought the Board of Ed had a purchasing policy that was written, and as it turns out, it doesn't seem to be the case. So, they're looking to us, meaning the rest of the town, to come up with a policy, a written policy which they will try to utilize and adopt in their own way. So, the, the recommendation was made somewhere along the way, that we have some pa- some language in here that encourages them to use anything they can out of this policy until such time as they adopt their own, and then to remind them that capital projects undertaken by the town for the benefit of Eastland Schools will, will proceed in accordance with this policy, which is, I think that we're trying to get at...
It's one of the last things we added.
Yeah, we're trying to get at that issue and just be clear about it.
Has that been a problem in the past, with bought capital items without coming to the town?
I can't speak to that, um, but I...
Yes.
I believe it has.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's worth adding in the hall?
But just, that's my understanding of the history of that.
Um, it was put on record the other evening, as I went to the Board of Education meeting, that they said that they had a, a purchasing policy.
Honestly, I will say here, um, I am not clear on this, because I understood, yes, there was, then I asked, and I was told no, so I on- I've been working under the, with the assumption
Yep.
that there is not a written purchasing policy.
And maybe there's not a written one.
Right, right.
And maybe
Right.
it operated like ours
Yes, yeah.
did and does, and, um...
And so much of what they do involves
They're looking for...
grants and so forth, so, yeah. But they were looking for, to us for this additional help.
Good, good, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Other comments? How would you like to proceed? This, um, this whole cleanup...
If you don't mind, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Just, before you go to the proceed, the, the local bidder option, we, we discussed this, I don't think there was an absolute against it, there were con- concern, well, my concern was that if you have this in there, you may not get your best foot forward on your bidders. That if they have the 10 percent clause, well, I'm just going to add 10 percent to the next last one and play my bets that somebody else doesn't put in it. That was a concern, my concern. But I see the reason for it, I get it, 10 percent, on this one, 10 percent seems kind of high, but, so.
As it, as it's written, how would we like to proceed? We've talked about the Board of Ed piece that's in there, um, I too don't know if we need to recommend to the Board of Ed in our policy, um, I think that's more of a, maybe a letter for, listen, we're all going to stare them down, and I know, gosh, I know Mrs. Picarazzi is going to eat them up, and they come bring their budget for next March and going, "Where's your policy?" you know, "And how are you doing? And you, you buying the cheapest textbooks or the best quality textbooks for the lowest money possible?" I, they're going to get that anyway, and they do get that anyway. So, I'm not, I'm not sure if we need to recommend that the Board of Ed adhere to applicable. I, I kind of like your point, um, as that stands out. I understand why it's in there, I totally understand why it's in there. Hopefully, they'll take the cue that they're being given to get their, um, their policy in order.
One option is when we approve this policy, can forward to them for information and consideration
Yeah.
the recommendation, that they, they, you know...
The numbering in here is a mess, no offense. Uh, Lisa, I, I, I have one page that it's, um...
My version.
Page four, uh, page eight says 98.
It's, it's crossed out, right? No, 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 it's, it's crossed out.
Oh, it's underlined.
It was, it was because when, when this word document started with number two, and it shouldn't be number one.
So, that's a nine, not an eight, okay.
Yeah, right.
That wasn't clear on, on, that's what that is. Apologies.
All it is, is somebody didn't do accept changes. If you, you printed that with the, the change on it.
So, shall we, um, I guess we could probably adopt this, maybe somewhere when they make the motion to take out the Board of Ed reference, they...
On that mark, I still think the second sentence is important, to, as a reminder that if you're coming before the town with a purchase, um, for capital improvement, that it has to follow these guidelines.
How about if, it doesn't say it has to follow...
It says further procurement of capital projects undertaken by the town.
It is required.
How about if, how about if in that second part, you get rid of the first sentence and the word further, and just say procurement for
I'm fine.
capital pop- projects undertaken
Yeah.
by the town for the benefit of Eastland Schools shall proceed in accordance with, because then it...
I get it.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
So, I'll make a...
Now, do they, on the capital items, does the town purchase it for the school, or does the school purchase it themselves?
If it's a capital?
Because it says undertaken by the town.
But every, the capital plan is through the town.
That's the plan, but who actually executes the purchase order?
So, okay, so... So, for example, um, the school building projects that are going on now, um, that fund is, you know, under the control of the town, um, we issue town purchase orders for the project, however, the project is managed by the town building committee. So, um, the town, um, the chair of the town building committee, every time the building committee meets, he comes in to see me, um, gives me information on what purchase orders need to be, um, you know, be, um, taken out
Mm-hmm.
for the project, and then also brings, um, building committee approved invoices for payments.
I think we should use better examples, so, but I will say, I think the town building committee is acting as the school building committee in this particular project.
Correct.
So, then, who are they really? But let's say the, the pool dehumidifier, maybe that's a bad example, because we mixed money on that one.
The computers, every year they come before us.
Annual computer purchase.
For the, for the computer purchases, um...
For the schools.
The board, the schools use, um, they do go out to bid, and they use, um, Board of Education approved rates for the computer.
But they have to go through appropriation of, of the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and Town Meeting.
Right.
Therefore, this would, they would have to adhere to this.
That was my understanding, that was intention.
Do they or don't they? I'm not sure if we've got three bids on the computers and such.
Well, for the computers...
But we've been holding them to, I mean, I remember one meeting that Jeff was held to this standard. He remembers it well.
The comput- the dehumidifiers, I do believe they had, they did get bids for that, but they did not bring that information
Yeah, that's true.
with them to the meeting.
They did a lot more work than they showed.
If you remember, um, at the town meeting, when we were doing the appropriations, um, the IT director from the board got up and did say, you know, did represent to the board that she did do an RFP process for the computer equipment.
So, are those all considered capital projects? Are the computers considered capital? No.
Not, you know...
Okay, so, if we say capital projects, it's not fully def- defining all the times that they come before our two boards. Should we say capital improvement projects and appropriations, um, requiring a town meeting?
What, what, what page are you on right now?
Page one.
Okay.
It's, it's the Board of Education comment, paragraph two. We just want to make sure when they're coming before the selectmen and the finance and the town meeting, that they're adhering to this standard, not their own.
So, that threshold, the requirement that's supposed to be...
Twenty thousand.
Twenty?
I thought it was twenty thousand for a town meeting.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
Twenty-five.
So, perhaps we would just include any purchases over 25,000 that require a town meeting, regardless of whether it's capital expenditure or...
Can we do that to the Board of Ed, though?
Well...
Yeah, yeah.
Any, any purchases over 25,000 that require a town meeting, is what she said, so yes, we could, if they're coming before us.
Yeah.
They spend $25,000 every 10 minutes over there, but, no, no, they, but they do, but, but when it comes before us, they need to adhere to this policy. And we're all agreeing on that, we just got to figure out how to say it so make sure they hold to it. I'd like that. Any purchases over 25,000 that were, that requires a town meeting for approval?
I mean, it would be nice if Jeff were here, to hear us say...
Yeah, I was going to say, if we're going to impose a requirement like that on them...
Well, he's watching.
Yeah, I'm sure he is.
They just placed a one-year contract for their computer services for $357,000. They just approved it at their last meeting. That didn't come before us?
That's because, I would venture to say, that's because that's something that's included in their operating budget.
I, I would agree. So, is it only 25,000 only for capital items that have to come to the town?
So, when we go, when we go out for town meetings during the course of a fiscal year, it's to do a special appropriation that was not included in the budget.
In the budget, right.
And so, you know, there's, you know, several different, you know, processes that, that are involved here. Because there are some capital projects that are in the budget, you know, in our annual adopted budget, that could exceed 25,000. So, you have that type of capital expenditure, if you will. Then you have special appropriation capital expenditures, and then you also have special appropriation project, um, capital project. So, there is a whole multitude of, of items.
So, how do we, how do we put that into English?
All of those items.
With this many words. Right now, it says procurement for capital projects undertaken by the town for the benefit of the Eastland Schools shall proceed in accordance with the provisions of this policy. So, it's capital projects, and we should include, um, capital projects or items, or any items requiring a, 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 a town meeting.
What about this 350 that Paul just brought up?
That's their per- that's their purchasing policy. That was for, that's for computer services, for all the computer services, and it's like our star computers.
Right, but don't we want that, that's a big purchase, don't we want that to be...
You can't.
What do you mean, we can't?
It doesn't go to, it doesn't go through our appro- appropriations, it was in their budget, you approve the, their budget.
That's the Board of Education's program.
They're just spending their budget, is what they're doing right now, at, at a Board of Education meeting. I hope that they got their best deal, and you can find out, I'm sure.
I, I just think...
We only have teeth when they're coming before us. We only can apply this when they're coming before us. They're on their own as far as spending the money, as we know. We give them a chunk of money, they can do what they want with it, um, state statutes. I'm not suggesting they aren't doing anything but being good stewards with our money, but...
The question comes down to...
Procurement for capital projects requiring a town meeting, undertaken, or, for capital projects and other appropriations undertaken by the town for the benefit of the towns, for the Eastland Schools that require a town meeting shall proceed in accordance with the provisions of this policy. That's what it is. Good job, Mark. Go ahead and say it, Anna.
My recommendation, again, would be that we delete the paragraph, and if we can't govern directly any, or only a small portion of their purchasing policies, then we should recommend that they have their own that doesn't conflict with ours. Now, I don't know if they're limited to the 25,000 based on statutes, all those other things that we've done, that the committee did the research on here, if it applies to Board of Education's, like it applies to the town or not. I know there's a separation of Board of Ed processes and the town for the right reasons, and to put something like that in the policy without fully understanding what it is we want them to be accountable to us for outside of a, you know, they would have to go to a town meeting if they wanted to get something new that wasn't in their capital plan already, that was...
We're not changing the appropriation process in town. All we're spelling out is when you do have to come before us, um, you better have your three bids.
And when you don't have to come before us, you can do what you want.
Yeah, absolutely. We're not changing their, the way that they do business, we can't.
Why would we want to...
But legal, we force.
Then why would we want to change it for an emergent item? Because the budget went before a town meeting, too. Their capital budget went before, right?
Right, but we have to do it all the time.
But on, when they come, okay, but when you think about it, um, for special appropriations, there is a process. They, first they come to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen hears their request and makes the decision on whether or not to approve it, and, and forward it to the Board of Finance. Then, at the Board of Finance level, they have the same opportunity to ask those questions and make a decision on whether or not to approve it, and then once the two boards approve it, at that point in time, it goes, it goes to the town meeting.
But that, that's the stuff we're asking them, we're considering asking them to adhere to this policy for, right?
Just reminding them when they come before, really, we're just stating the obvious.
Maybe the next iteration of this procedure, maybe the next iteration of this, this stuff. Well, we, we can ask them to consider using this policy for their stuff going forward, at least we'd catch some stuff in this review, in this rev.
Thank you. What's your pleasure? You want to clean it up and then vote on it next time? Do you want to vote on it tonight?
The only concern I have, if we've made a change to that paragraph and possibly asking the Board of Ed, it's nice to get, my only fault is, it's nice to get their input is to, you know, at least give them a chance to respond to it before we adopt a policy, but, you know, that's just a personal feeling.
Anyone else? Anybody want to make a recommendation or a motion?
Uh, okay.
Want to table it?
I, I gotta say, I would like to see, if we're going to make revisions, I'd like to see a revised copy, just re-threw it again
Exactly.
and satisfying.
I, I agree, I'll...
Would anybody mind if we also cleaned up the, this cross, the cross, what do you call it, the crossouts and the highlight parts?
Oh, yeah, just accept changes.
Get a clean copy?
Yeah, yeah.
So, let's have that be the goal, get clean copies.
What, what's the matter?
No, that, that's fine, that's fine. I just, I don't know what copy you have.
Well, maybe I'm dealing with an old copy.
Yeah, that's...
I have a draft.
We have the track change copy that has the line notes in it.
Uh, yeah, I, I changed the date.
July, eight.
Our date is July, July, July eighth of 2018.
So, there's the July nine
That's...
copy, which is clean.
So, let's make sure we have, yeah, let's get the clean, I think we should try to make sure we all have the laser grade.
Yeah, I forwarded it, so I...
No, 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 not, not testing aspersions.
We might be working off, well, I don't know if there was any other changes.
There was a, there was a final
There was a one, a couple little tweaks.
Final, where there was some, right, that last, and that was actually into July nine, because I think everyone...
Sorry about that, folks.
Okay, we'll make sure that gets sent in, hook out.
That up, we'll clean the Board of Ed.
So, make these changes that were being suggested.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And, um, Sandy, you're taking copious minutes over there, um, so maybe some of the other suggestions that Paul pointed out, I'd like to just, I'll take a look at them, and we can take a look at it as a board on October, well, next meeting, this, this second meeting of September.
Well...
Just to make sure we, let's grab it, okay?
Do we want to, as a courtesy, send it to the Board of Ed?
I'll, I'll, I will send it to Jeff
Yeah, just Jeff.
and let him know that, you know, and he knows already, again, he got a hard lesson in that, when you're going before the commissions and the town, you should follow these procedures. And he is already doing that.
Yep.
He, we have already, we've really already implemented this, other than the threshold implementation, and that will be down at the meeting. Okay, great, thank you. I don't know what it is, Lisa, every time you show up for a meeting, it goes long. The other common denominator, Lisa, Picarazzi.
I, I wouldn't put this one on, Lisa.
This is the latest we've ever, appreciate your hard work and your comments, Lisa. Yeah, I can only imagine. And thank you, Dan, and Mr. Salerno, and Mr. Cunningham, thank you for your service and hard, hard work on this, this is, oh, this was a beast. We're getting out of the end. Ex officio reports? Anyone?
Just real quick, the building commission, Matt, obviously, everything was open on time, um, I think there's about a million dollars of contingency left, there's, it's slowly getting eaten away with, um, things that they're finding, um, that was expected and that's, well, unexpected, but, um, that we budgeted for. Planning, Matt, um, they approved the, uh, the two, two lot re-subdivision up at Wall Hill. They had, um, continuation of public hearing for Spring Rock Road, that's been, they, they got, yeah, public, and that's been, um, continued, um, still waiting for the inland wetland approval or denial. That's all I have.
Mr. Siri.
Parks and Rec met last month, they just went over a couple of things, they updated, uh, revenues for the summer and so forth like that, uh, one of the things they've pointed out, and this was just recent, too, even on July fourth, we did not hit capacity for parking this year, so there was always parking available, uh, maybe not in the lower lot, but you may have to up to the top lot, but there was parking at McCooks this year.
Throughout this, yeah, throughout the season.
Yeah, throughout this year, it was a good season, and, uh, so people know now that if you have a dog, you can bring him into McCooks right now, it's after the Labor Day, so...
But not on the boardwalk.
Not on the boardwalk at all, ever.
People.
Yep, but, uh, I noticed, I noticed several, several dogs over the last day or so up at, uh, McCooks, all under leash and being properly cared for.
Mr. Cunningham, what do you got?
I noticed my lab is kind of salty and Sandy, I wonder if my daughter was out there with her.
Ah.
But anyhow, um, so Historic Properties Commission, the, uh, there's this issue they've been work, working on, and they're really trying to manage, you know, all these various collections and the different, you have, you know, you have the Brookside Farms, and you have Lee House, and you have Historic Properties Commission, and, um, you have all these artifacts and items that they're trying to categorize and track and understand what they have, and you have two or three different systems that are, that exist in the town for doing that, and they're trying to find a way to coalesce these various systems so that eventually they can upload that da- data to, there's a state of Connecticut has a system that they're trying to be compatible with. So, um, that's really the focus of, of their efforts right now, to come up with a, a database for these various different groups of things that they own, so we know what they have and we can get our hands on them and, uh, know what's out there, and where it came from, and what it means to, to the various, um, houses that they're affiliated with. So, that's, uh, that was the topic of conversation the other night, the barbecue bike and barbecue is coming up, and hopefully, that's going to be well attended, I, the indications are that, that they're going to have a pretty good, uh, year again this year, so it's, it's gaining momentum, so let's hope that they make a few dollars for those, uh, historical properties. That's it.
Awesome. Mr. Dean?
As stated earlier, the inland wetlands, wetlands agency is still deliberating on the Twin Valley 23 lot subdivision on Green Valley Lakes Road. They also received an application for 120, uh, residential units at Gateway, second phase of Soundview, uh, they have not, they tabled that initially for their next meeting, but that will include road improvements and work in the wetlands, so they'll be working through the details of that. Harbor Management Shellfish Commission have submitted three names to the governor to replace Mr. Dick Morris. Their number one recommend, recommendee is Ron Johnson, who's a retired Weatherfield police officer, a past Shellfish Warden, and a Marine Patrol Officer. They also are in possession of and in deliberations of a revised well school plan for aquaculture in the Niannick River. And the Board of Education nominated and approved via vote Ryan Schrader as a replacement for Al Litterfield on the board. They also announced that they received a $20,000 grant, uh, to bring a suicide education programs into the Eastland Schools at $10,000 per year for the next two years. And that's all they have.
Mark, I had two things.
Sure.
Just to follow up, uh, the dogs on the boardwalk, just so people know that service dogs are allowed, I know someone that has disabilities that was harassed for having their service dog, um, with, with him on the boardwalk.
Thank you for correcting me.
Yep, and, um, the, um, kudos to the police department, I had a friend who's also an elected official that received one of those, uh, heinous calls threatening that their, uh, their child was being abducted and stuff like that, and, uh, they called the police, and they handled it very well, um, so just kudos to the police department on that.
Police are doing a great job. And their, their motto is just to put everything out, to communicate to the public through social media or otherwise, and, um, and, and it's not just, it's a way to get the people in the public involved in what they're doing, and also recognize the work that they, the mighty tasks that they have in the crazy world we live in, but it's, it's also helped catch a lot of people by doing that. Well, uh, schools are open, and our elementary schools, all three are under construction, um, uh, construction teams worked hard all summer. Our Fire Marshal's Office and our Building Office made sure that the schools are safe. I have safe conditions in them so that when the kids are in the school, there's fire, fire exits are still being observed and there's multiple ways out of buildings and that. Construction equipments are not in the way of, of kids and, you know, there's no danger there. I had one hot parent I talked to, pretty hot, but everyone, but, but apparently in speaking to Mr. Newton over at the schools, very smooth. And parents have been understanding, the kids have been great about this. All the kids got hard hats on their first day of school. You saw the picture in the paper, they're all wearing hard, you know, little plastic hard hat, it's kinda cute, you know? This is gonna be the year of construction and will always be remembered for this. But we're gonna end up with three great elementary schools, three neighborhood schools, and that's ultimately probably the best for our, our town. I went to a pig roast today at the Senior Center, man, the poor pig. I don't know if you haven't been to Pig Roast, but they're staring up at you with the apple in the mouth and he's looking at you going, why'd you do this to me? And the seniors are the great, they're there and had a great time over at McCook's. The Miracle League continues to make money, there was a wiffle ball tournament, there's several other things that happened. They're, they're also playing a big gala, and I hope you all go, in mid-November, it's gonna be at Mohegan Sun. There's gonna be big name sports stars there and they're at about $200,000 raise, which is a big number for less than a year. And most of the town, most of that money coming from within our town. I think we talked about it in August, but Costco is sign sealed and delivered. They showed up to our town, they met with all our department heads, they've already gotten preapprovals and are asking questions about, you know, what kind of material and how many exits and how many feet from the door must this be? And they're, they're very organized. When they, when they come in, they already know the answers and they're gonna just build the building that we told them to build and allowed them to build. So our folks have been very-